Good morning. It is Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting along with our FY26 budget hearing. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now is the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you're in the public meeting room and would like to make public comment, please come forward. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand and we'll be called on. And seeing none, we'll close. Was there one? Yes, there was. We have Cambridge.
Yes.
Yes. Did you have a comment on today's agenda?
No, I'm just trying to figure out how to get logged in so you can hear us.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Thank you. Alright, since we have no public comment at this time, we'll move on to the public hearing items. Uh, we do have, uh, besides the supervisors here, we have in the room here, we have recorder Stacy Harridge, auditor Lucy Martin, treasurer Ted Rasmussen. I see that director of conservation is in here, uh, Michael Cox, and director of secondary roads, our engineer Darren Moon. Uh, I'm not sure if the sheriff, Paul Fitzgerald, or our county attorney Timothy Meals are online. Um, but I do want to recognize, oh yeah, so we have our director of facilities here, Joby Brogdon, director of human resources and internal, Alyssa Wignall, okay. And, and director of
External
External operations and community outreach. Sandra King. Alright. Now we'll turn it over to you, Lisa.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh, the official budget was published in all three official newspapers as required on 417. The budget that you adopt today cannot be higher than the published, but it can be lowered at this public hearing.
Lisa, could you pull your mic a little bit closer, please?
There are handouts available that include some of the charts, um, along with the projected FY26 salary of department heads and elected officials, which includes salary increases. Story County did see valuation increases. Valuations are what the taxing authorities base their levies on. We will talk limitations later in this presentation. The rollback is determined at the state level and is the amount that the property is taxed on. So if you own a residential property assessed at $100,000, the taxable value in the upcoming year will be $47,432. For agricultural property assessed at $100,000, the taxable value will be $73,858. And the commercial industrial is rolled back to 90% and backfilled by the state at a reduced rate. This is the last year of that, so this year it's 20%. Next year it will be zero. So the departments had held work sessions way back in January and February. This new schedule is kind of making us drag it out. Uh, in this, the salaries, uh, we budgeted a 3% cost of living adjustment for all positions. The health and insurance premiums were budgeted to increase 5%. And the full-time, there was one full-time position added. Uh, it was a split between general betterment and, or excuse me, general assistance and veterans affairs. The asset, which is the analysis, social service evaluation team, it actually, um, that contribution increased by 5% this year. The ARPA funding is still being spent. Uh, we have until 12/31/26 to spend the rest of those dollars. Uh, we are budgeting obviously to spend it in the next couple of years. So for '23, we spent 2.9 million of ARPA money, or about 16% of the funds. For FY24, we spent 4.8 million, or another 26%. And the FY25 reestimated amount is 10, a little over $10 million. So this is, this is where we're spending the, the large dollars in FY25. There was a capital improvement plan that was put together, and it includes funding for secondary roads building and new equipment, TELC Phase IV, DEPI development, HSC heat pump, asphalt at the Justice Center, and data processing equipment. The bond proceeds that are being budgeted in FY26 include R38 Right-Away, Annem's Mill Dam, Dickens Cabin, Hickory Grove Beach improvements, Oxbow Restoration. We are budgeting about $614,000 of those bond proceeds this year. So we also budgeted for economic development to fund the urban renewal in small communities in home-based Iowa. So with the passage of HF 718, many taxing budgeting processes and deadlines were affected. We will look at what the code says regarding maximum levies on the next slide, but the calculations for the current year are shown here. There is now a maximum revenue growth related to valuation limitations, which translates to a max general levy of $3.50 and a max rural of $3.95. Since our growth was small, we are able to access the max. The county auditor was required to send a countywide mailing with the proposed rates of the city, school, and county, which are the three largest taxing entities. The mailing, which was prescribed by the Department of Management, gave the dates and times of the public hearing for each entity. No action is taken at the hearing, um, but it did cost the taxpayers $16,800 this year.
And that mailing does not provide the full picture.
Correct. So talk about the different funds that the county levies for, and this hopefully explains the code of Iowa limits and requirements for those. Countywide, the first one means every taxpayer in the county pays that. The supplemental fund, which is limited to, in order to access it, you must be at the max of the general, and it's limited to certain services, which I've listed here. And we do budget our, most of those services in the supplemental. So this year's supplemental levy is proposed to go down by 57 cents from the current year to 35 cents per thousand. Since the county can access 11 cents more in the general fund, the supplemental can be lower. Employees' health insurance and all the property and liability insurance are the largest expenses from the supplemental fund. For the debt service, um, that is also on all residents of the county. It is, a pre-levy resolution was passed in March for the conservation bond that was approved at the November election. In this budget, the borrowing is 5 million out of the 25 million voted for. And that, along with the debt already incurred for secondary roads projects and Storycom, we are levying for 18 cents per thousand, which is an increase of nine cents. Um, rural basic, all residents in the unincorporated area pay that. That is going to be $3.18, which is an increase of 30 cents per thousand. The tax askings for this proposed budget are lower by $1.2 million, and the overall levy rate is lower by 38 cents for countywide and eight cents for rural. So the county is required to budget by service area for revenues and expenses. This is the revenue chart for the upcoming year. Um, overall, the revenues are down 5.9% from the amended FY25 budget, which I'm going to amend again, just so you know. Um, the budgeted revenues for Story County are represented here. Uh, 61% of our revenues are from property taxes. 19% are from intergovernmental, which is going to include road use tax, state replacement tax, uh, commercial and industrial replacement, state and federal grants. 7% is for local, from local option sales tax, and 5% for fees and services, 2% TIF revenue, and 6% interest in rentals. Our interest is higher, has been higher this last couple of years. Um, this revenue chart does not include the $5 million bond proceeds, as this graph represents normal revenues. For expenses, we're budgeting, um, 57 million, 57.6 million. Overall, the expenses are down 14.2% from the amended FY25 budget. So of our, uh, services that we have to budget for, 31% is going to public safety. That includes the services of the sheriff and the attorney, 18% to the county engineer with, for roads and transportation, 17% for administrative services, which include the board of supervisors, the auditor's management side, the treasurer's management side, facilities management, info technology, and county liability insurance. 13% goes to county environment and education, which includes conservation, animal control, IRVM, county libraries, and planning and development. 9% of our budget is for health and social services. Um, that's going to include your environmental health department, the community, the general assistance department, VA, juvenile court, the HHS local office, and many asset services. 6% of our budget is for capital projects in the next budget year. 4% is for government services. That's where the auditor's election, treasurer, motor vehicle services, and recorder are. Uh, 2% is for bonded debt service, and 1% is for non-program current. The non-program current is mainly the ARPA funds. 98%, I think, is ARPA funds in that, in that amount, because they're going to the other, other cities and entities that are using the ARPA dollars for their roads and such, or sewer and such.
So can, so just for clarification, the, the revenues and expenses, the expenses include ARPA dollars we're planning to spend. So if one was to just look at this and look at our revenue over expenses, it doesn't, it, it
We're still spending down those dollars.
Right, right, but the ARPA dollars are skewing it.
Yes.
Yes.
I had to point that out. Last year, somebody said that, as well, why is the county spending such more, more than they're taking in?
Mm-hmm.
And the difference is simply the ARPA.
Right.
And you can't count the ARPA twice as revenue, because I've had people ask why it did not show up.
No, we got it one time, or two times. Two fiscal years, actually. I think we got one and then
Right, right, right.
The next fiscal year, we got the other half, so it's already sitting in the funds, so we're spending the fund down.
Right.
So this chart shows a current distribution of dollars by taxing authority in Story County. On the next slide, we will look at an individual tax statement and where the dollars go, but this gives a snapshot of the overall dollars generated by each taxing authority. As you can see, schools are about 46%, cities are next at about 29%, the county is about 15%, and then all the other authorities are below 5%. So when you come to the treasurer's office to pay taxes, the breakdown of how these dollars are distributed is represented here. Again, we're on $100,000 assessed value, which is taxable at 47. Um, what was my number? 47.4. Uh, the taxes that you would pay for the city in Nevada in this case is $1,658. And of that, um, Nevada school would receive about 662, or 40%. The city would get about 42%, or $693. The county, us, would get 11%, or $191. The area school, 2%. And other, others, which include ag extension, eh, poo, speak, Lisa. Ag extension, county assessor, and Story County Hospital is about 5% of your, your area school. It's DMAC, if that's confusing to anybody. So if you live in the Nevada township and the Nevada school district, so same comparison, same school district out in the country, the pie looks a little different, obviously, because you don't pay city taxes. Um, the total taxes, in this case, 1,149. School gets 57%, county gets 30%, 3% for the area school, and 3% for the other, um, taxing, no, 7%, excuse me, for the other. The township in here gets 3%, I'm sorry. I misspoke. It's in a nutshell, that's what we put together for a budget this year.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions for Lisa?
No.
Thank you.
I just really like this, this packet that you put together, because it really does answer a lot of the questions that people have, and I use it quite a bit, so thank you.
It's out on the website if you need it.
Great.
Appreciate that.
Will do.
And I appreciate the comment that supervisor Basil made, just recognizing those ARPA dollars are, are in there, because that is a question that, that does come up at times when, I know when I've been about, I think when all of us have been out, and I try to tell PB you can't, can't count those revenue dollars twice.
Well, and ARPA was a weird thing, so if you're just, if you're not steeped in county government and finances, and you just look at this because you're curious, it, it, it's disturbing. It's alarming looking
Right.
On the surface.
And if you, you know, when I talk about the amount of money we spent, you know, we got the first batch in FY22, and we only spent, what was it? It was a very minimal
Amount, not much.
And '23, we didn't spend all that much. I mean, we were so working toward trying to get everything um, figured out as to what the rules were going to be. So it wasn't as though we could, you know.
Treasurer's noting that we've earned interest on the ARPA dollars for five years, so that's also
That's, yeah, that's good.
That makes the interest on investments, because we do not have to put that in the ARPA funds. Those can be general fund revenues. They did rule that at one point in time.
That's great. Okay, moving on, uh, we've got consideration of resolution 2581.
The first order of business when you're certifying your budget is to, uh, consider the resolution for elected official salaries. Um, so I have given, the Story County Compensation Board recommendation is included in your handout, or in your agenda, and I have given you the options that you have each individual, individually asked for.
So, just so I'm clear on the process here, you've got several different the 2581.
Right.
But then you have other resolutions down below. I, I'm just
Resolution 2581 is the comp, the elected official compensation. Then 2582 is going to be the budget.
Okay, so if there's any
So the budget
Discussion on the salaries all comes here, not with the other
Correct.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the code says you have to do a resolution for the elected official salaries before you approve the budget.
Gotcha. Okay. Alright. Any discussion on resolution 2581? I know, if I recall correctly, the, as Lisa has out here, the compt board met back, was it November, December, made their recommendations of about 2.6, or 2.65 for supervisors and 6% for all other elected officials. I know some documentation was provided at that, um, so I know I've been looking at the ISAC salary page as well, looking at population, where salary's at, and as well.
I, I think, um, we're, we're budgeting for a 3% for everyone. I recognize that electeds don't get steps. But my, my request was that Lisa include a 3% for all electeds and 2.6 for supervisors. So that is what I would be. Um, if I were to make a motion, that's what I would make. I am open to discussion.
I would, I just want to make a comment too. Where you mentioned electeds don't get steps for their deputies. Folks who are already at their max, the top of their steps as well, would not get an additional
Correct, right.
Step. I just want to make sure that that is
Thank you, yeah.
That is clear as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that's a good point that I think maybe the compt board kind of missed. Um, I would make a motion that we, um, adopt resolution 25.81, the 2.6% cost of living adjustment, salary increase for supervisors, and 3% for all other elected officials.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None? Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Okay, now we'll move on to procedures are for the public hearing. Uh, if you would like to speak at the public hearing, please give your name and your address. Why do some things seem out of? Just give your name and address, and then we'd move on to the action of the proposed budget. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, alright. I just feel like I usually have some other step there. It seems a little odd this morning, or whatever, so. Okay, are there anyone who'd like to make public comment on the proposed budget? If you're in the public meeting room, please come to the podium, state your name and address. If you are online, please raise your hand. And seeing none, I guess we close on that. We move on to consideration of which resolution, Lisa?
2582.
They're both
2582, as published, the first one.
That includes the change with the salaries?
Correct. I, it will when I complete it.
You said as published, that's why I just wanted to
Oh, you, the only thing you need to worry about is lowering expenditures, um, or levy rate. So, so as published with
With that levy rate.
With, with, do you want it as published, but you want it with the, of the resolution?
2581.
2581 implemented.
Okay, 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 no, that's, that's fine. I just want to make sure if we're going to make a motion, we're doing it correctly.
Correctly.
So, alright, so I would take a motion to consider resolution 25-82, uh, the budget as, as published with the acknowledgement of resolution 25-81 and the reductions set forth earlier. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. I would make that motion.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Oh. Oh, and directing the auditor to certify taxes as published. Is that all ready?
Yep.
Okay, yes, been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. You really need to have a better script on that, on that area. Okay, so we don't need to do anything else. We'd move on to number seven, is that correct? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I know you put a couple, uh, options there for us. That's what throws me off. So I appreciate having all the options, but it does. Okay, next moving on, we've got a proclamation to recognize Public Service Recognition Week as May 4th through the 10th. Supervisor Merkin, would you start us out?
Certainly. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world.
And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, and astronauts, nurses, and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity.
Whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 4 through 10, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in Story County. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Uh, moving on, we have agency reports. We have the City of Cambridge's American Rescue Plan Annual Report.
Yes, good afternoon, good morning to the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, on behalf of the City of Cambridge, we just wanted to express our appreciation for the opportunity to receive the funding of the Story County ARPA grant that we were awarded, the $250,000. Um, we then amended, asked for an amendment. After some funds, um, were left over, the bid came in under, the cost came in under what the bid was. Um, we asked for an amendment, and we were able to complete our storm water project. And it has now been complete and is providing service well in our community with no ponding after storms. Um, I have our public works director Dale Henneke here with me, um, so that if there's any questions about this project, he could help answer them.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? No? I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad you're able to get it completed, and it's doing what you were hoping it would do.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Hey, next we have the City of Collins, American Rescue Plan Act Annual Report. Good morning, Katie.
Good morning.
Yep, you'll want to turn on, yep, turn that on, yep.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so for the Collins, um, ARPA funds, we were awarded funds for three different projects, and one of the projects was complete rather quickly, and that was the meal, meal, uh, free meals for everybody. And so we still have two ongoing projects, and they're both public works projects. So I have notes here from our public works director. And, um, one of the projects is related to sewer, and one is related to water. So for the sewer one, he says, "The sewer lining and rehab work is still underway and expected to be completed within the next couple of months." AccuJet has been the company that has been doing the work, and they are reorganizing under a new name, which is American Rehab Coatings. So it's the same people, but a new name. Um, and they'll be finishing up within the next couple of months. And then for the water rehabilitation project, he says, um, "Last year, we had requested to shift some of the remaining funds from upgrading our Fourth Avenue water line to detection and replacement of lead and galvanized water lines throughout town." And Brett and I came to that meeting and did the amendment. Um, Cooper and Sons is who we contracted to identify areas of concern. We're going to be tackling these projects this summer. Uh, let's see, due to Iowa regulations, we need to contract MSA as part of the work. And then for project completion, "We anticipate that the sewer work will be wrapping up by late July, and the water to be completed by the end of September." So, let's see. Does anybody have any questions? No.
No, thank you.
Okay.
I don't.
Okay.
Alright, I'm glad to see it's all on track and
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Yes.
No surprises.
Nope. Cooper, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next we have consideration of minutes.
I move approval of minutes.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Haddon's, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval for the items on consent.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. We are down to additional items. Discussion and consideration of employee access only restroom at the Human Services Center. Good morning, Joby.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Okay, let me get my papers out. So yes, we'd look in at making a couple of the current restrooms at the Human Services Center accessible to employees of the building only. You know, over the years, we've had some incidences in the restroom, so for safety and security purposes, we kind of dug into this a little bit deeper. Started with making sure can we, and yes, we, we meet all restroom guidelines for the building. Basically, the occupancy load of the entire facility is 200 people, which equates to, we would need three water closets per gender. And we currently have nine for females and, I mean, yes, nine for females and six for males. So we would, even closing off the two lower level ones, we chose that area because it was about the only ones that we could and that remained access from, so all employees could get to it, so, of the building. So it consists of building a wall with a secondary door and then they'd have a choice to either come in from the west end or they could cut, access them from the east end, both in a private keyless entry manner. Due to our workload, facilities couldn't complete everything in-house, so we looked at contracting part of it out and doing part of it with our own facilities management staff and kind of see, I have that broke down in the memo, the main building of the wall, setting the door frame and providing the door sheet rock and finishing that. Herald Pike Construction, in then, we would run the electric in the wall, do all the access control on the door, provide the door hardware. And then if you've been down there, you'll see there's these screening partition things that are just outside of the restrooms. Those on all three floors are on our work schedule to remove because they do violate ADA access into the women's restroom on all three floors. But once that's done, we'll have to do some floor patching, we're going to take care of that in-house. And then the ADA water cooler is in between those two restrooms, so we will relocate one up to the second floor outside of the current break room, so that we meet all the requirements we do, so. And this wasn't a planned, budgeted for project in human services budget, so I'm here today to request additional funds to perform that work. Any questions?
I don't have questions, just thank you. Because when we first started talking about this, I, I know, I know your folks are very, very busy already and you bumped this up to the top of the list, of the top of many lists. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all of the very quick work you did and your team did to try and find a way to get this, get this done.
You're welcome, yeah. I mean, I, I feel it's, it's a need we've needed at that facility for a while and it, it took some creative thinking to come up with a way, because we've, it's not the first time we've talked about this. It was just my Assistant Director Matt had the idea and then we, I did the calculations and I even reached out to some local architects to confirm that my, the way I was calculating the restroom load was correct, so that we didn't, because I didn't want to create more problems by doing it, so.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'd take a motion.
I would move approval of spending $12,600 to change, change the bathroom in the Human Services Building to employee only.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of temporary third deputy to onboard and train in the Treasurer's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So after 37 years of amazing service to Story County, our Finance Deputy Artie Baldwin has determined it is time to ride off into the sunset, but she has given us a few more months of faithful service. So we, in the Treasurer's Office, are looking to take advantage of her willingness to stick around into the middle of August and we would like to hire a third deputy position for a temporary spot in which they would be able to learn under Artie directly. The idea would be to have this position start about the 30th of June and last until Artie's retirement is official. That would give about six or seven weeks of training and tutelage on especially important times in the Treasurer's Office, which is the end of the fiscal year, that happens on July 1. So all of our fiscal year balancing and ending of the fiscal year, it's also when we mail out tax statements to everyone, so it'll give them an opportunity to see how we mail out the tax statements. And it is when we begin our annual audit with the state auditors, so Artie would also be able to train on how, how you prepare those documents, where you find what the auditors are looking for. Lots of other important things happening at that time and, and also give them a couple of months to see month end balancing, to see apportionment, to see dispersments, to all those others. Due to the many, many duties that Artie performs, receipting in all of the, all of the revenue for the entire county, every department, everything comes through our office, all of the banking for the county movement of money, access to all those accounts, we feel it is worthwhile and prudent to spend the extra money to have that third deputy in order to get some really invaluable training and onboarding with Artie before she fully retires. Any questions?
Are you sure a couple of months is going to do it? 37 years of knowledge.
Wow.
He's agreed to not block us on our cell phone, so answer questions sometimes.
Wow.
Were you looking to have the, so the third deputy would be just until Artie retires and then you'd be back to your normal?
Yeah, as soon as Artie's retirement is complete, we would promote that person to Finance Deputy, we would eliminate the position of third deputy.
Gotcha.
Do you have funds in your budget for this?
In talking to folks at budget time between Alyssa and Lisa, they said it's hard to really budget for something along those lines, so we did not include anything specific. We would do more or less a budget adjustment
Okay.
for that timeframe.
And you'd be hiring somebody at a lower salary, so.
For the, for the time that they would be a third deputy by Iowa code, you can only have two deputies at 85%. The third deputy cannot be over 80%. So we would look at, we would probably post with a starting salary of 75% or 72, 75% with the knowledge that they can move up to 85% as they perform the duties and prove that they can maintain the job and position.
So if we were to approve the position for like eight months, would you stay eight months longer?
It was worth, it's just worth the question, worth the question.
As I was telling Ted, it was a hard decision for me to make. I love my job, I love what I do, and I love who I work with in all offices, but it's time for me and so my last end day will be August 8.
Well, we've appreciated everything that you've done, Artie, and I'm sure you will be missed in the Treasurer's Office and everywhere else too, but I notice, I'm sure Ted will miss having you there and your expertise.
There will be a big party, right?
No.
No.
Really? Okay.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have cake in a different room then.
There will be cake, but we, we won't do streamers and balloons and no speeches, right?
That's correct.
By me or her. Definitely by me, right?
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of a temporary third deputy to onboard and train in the Treasurer's Office as, as detailed in the memo.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no departmental reports, other reports, we have fiscal year 25 quarterly financial report.
One's here today, right?
Right.
End of March 31st, 2025, looks really good at the end of, excuse me. Overall, we've spent 62 and a half percent of our budget. Only two departments are over the 75%. That doesn't change the fact that I'm going to amend a bunch of departments, but for, as you can see, for the general fund, we're at 69% of our expenditures. The ARPA fund, we're at 65% of our expenditures, there's a balance of 3.7% left to spend there. Supplemental fund, 72%, which is not unusual because the supplemental fund gets loaded heavy at the first, paying insurance and such. The TIF fund is at 59%. Opioid fund, I thought I'd add that to this list because that's something that we're actually having expenditures on now. 23% of what we, of the expenditures for the year. And Secondary Roads Fund is at 55%. Revenues, we have seven departments that are over and an overall 83% of the revenues have been collected, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
I have none.
Thank you. Neither. Great, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any upcoming agenda items?
Don't have any.
No?
No.
Okay, now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the Board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone has public comment and you're near the public meeting room, please come forward or if you're online, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we will close public comment number two. We'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements. Supervisor Merkin?
Thank you. I'm meeting this afternoon from 1:00 to 2:00 in Ames City Hall regarding Bridge Home and an open house later. The Ames Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is having an open house from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Ames Public Library and anybody can give input there in the planning that's going on there. We have a Board of Supervisors staff meeting tomorrow morning. And Thursday, May 1st, the admin building is being closed from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. for an all-staff training session. And Thursday afternoon, Communities of Excellence Steering Committee at At Mary Greeley Medical Center. Friday morning, I have a meeting at Story County Medical Center with the Director and Monday we have, looks like we have recognition in engineering and secondary roads. Okay. That's what I have.
Supervisor Basil?
Yeah, I am going to be out of the office the rest of this week, but I have several meetings I'll be zooming into. Tomorrow is the Nevada Economic Development Council's Business Appreciation Breakfast. I will be out of town. I'm hoping there were a couple of people that got signed up to go though. I have a NACO meeting tomorrow afternoon and Thursday, I have an Alternatives Board Meeting and then I will be zooming into the Communities of Excellence Steering Committee Meeting Thursday. And then I will be back Monday for the engineer and secondary road appreciation, recognition. I did just want to bring up quickly from our Housing Action Plan Meeting yesterday, we're talking about, from the, the, the housing, not training, but the, the housing conference two weeks ago, last week. There were a couple of presentations that other counties are doing to support affordable housing and so what we're talking about is maybe taking a team and going to talk to Lynn County and Marion County about some of the things that they've been working on. So just wanted to give you a heads up about that. If you're interested in going, let me know.
I am.
And as soon as we get something organized, we'll ask Joy to take a look at calendars and see about getting something set up.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Okay. I have, I, I didn't realize about the Bridge Home meeting, so I put that on my calendar. I have a then private meeting later this afternoon. Tomorrow morning, I have breakfast meeting with Greg with the Alliance, a board staff meeting, I have a NACO faulty counties advisory board meeting, and then I have a workforce meeting. Thursday, we have training within our building. Then I have Community of Excellence meeting in the afternoon. Friday, I have a Behavioral Health Town Hall meeting. Monday, yes, the engineer and secondary roads recognition going on. And then next week, I will zoom into Tuesday's meeting because Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I will be out in DC with the Alliance's DC fly-in.
Great, thank you for going on that.
Sure. And with no other update there, I will take a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5 parent 1(c), to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disbench the position of the governmental body in the litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. We are I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. We are adjourned.